Good evening. I apologize for our delay this evening. This time, I'm calling the meeting of the city, Hamlet City Council to order. Our first order of business tonight is the invocation and at this time, we'll have a moment of silence. Amen. Council, you have before you tonight, the agenda for business. What are your wishes at this time?
So move.
Take a motion, have a second, or any additions, deletions, changes that need to be done? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Council, you also have before you at this time, budget review minutes from February the twelfth and special meeting, budget review minutes and the special meeting minutes from February the twelfth and February the twenty-sixth. What are your wishes at this time?
Motion to approve.
A motion?
Second.
Have a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Alright, this time, we open the session in minutes where we have comments from attendees. If there's anyone here tonight that's not on the agenda for anything and you've got comments you need to make to the council, please come forth at this time.
How are you all tonight?
State your name, please and continue.
I'm Johnny Futterfield, sorry.
We know you.
Nice to see you all again. It was a year ago this time last year that I addressed you guys about a narcotics officer for the town.
I can't hear. Excuse me just a second, is that microphone on? Pull it down.
I can't speak loud enough, that may be me. Can you hear me now from my phone?
There you go.
That's better.
I just wanted to revisit, it's what I do. I work in healthcare, I work in public health. I just wanted to ask if you maybe reconsidered it, the reasons why. And just to let you know, there are new drugs up and coming for illicit drugs out there in the streets. I have the old numbers, I can pull the new numbers once they post them for you all. And if you would like to see the last ones I brought to you all in color, I'd be more than happy to leave us with you and see where we are. The new drug that is going to be probably your next problem that you're gonna have to look at is called ketamine. Or it's going to be introduced into offices called a inhalant to prevent PTSD, depression. And it's already out there considered called the special K rave drug, but now they've actually, uh-oh.
We need to put these things up on the screen and go over them one at a time, let you go over it.
Oh, that's okay. These were the last numbers that I brought to you. I don't have the new ones yet. But I just wanted you to see the rate of the outpatient opial pills that are dispensed by the county. And you see our color is very high. So I just wanted to bring those back to light to you all, so you could see these and actually bring it to light, which you're actually looking at, what you're trying to fight here. On a local level, I think, I wanna thank you first of all for taking what I brought to you last time and pushing it forward. So the county could offer help to people that would not otherwise have gotten it for treatment, help, just awareness that's out there now. But again, it's just that when it comes to this on a local level, I think that you seriously need to just reconsider and see what we need to do. And it's not necessarily bringing in a whole brand new position. And I think that county, I think it's great that you can collaborate with your county. I greatly appreciate that. But locally, can Hamlet take care of Hamlet? That's my concern. I wanna make sure that if the county's called out to somewhere else, that if there's another incident away from that one, that we can take care of ourselves. Because when it comes down to it, taking care of yourself as a local small town is very important. And then you can grow, you can be the rock, be the foundation for the rest of the county and prove to them that we can do it as a small town. I've got another prevention summit, I can pass these out to you all. This is in June, I wanted to bring this to you this as soon as I could. So somebody locally, hopefully here in Hamlet, could attend this and then spread it to the rest of the county. Okay, it's called a summit and it's got local, state, and national efforts, again, local, we gotta take care of ourselves, but yet collaborate with the rest of the community to make this grow and be strong. Evidence-based prevention practices, adverse childhood experiences, strategic activities, innovative policies, community strategies, social determinants of health harm reduction, and right there it says criminal justice, treatment and recovery. So I would really like to see somebody from this town go to this summit and learn from this and grow. And eventually spread it out to the rest of the county members, so we can do something with this. But again, it's like, Mr. Bayless, I greatly appreciate words of wisdom that you gave to me ten years ago. And it was when my father was passing away, it was take care of yourself so you can take care of others. I took that, I took that to heart and I ran with that. And I wanna make sure that Hamlet can take care of Hamlet and then we can take care of others. I wanted to also end with this and really make sure everybody is, again, it's like I said, prevention and education is key. Internalize your department, make your department stronger. And again, make sure we can take care of ourselves and collaborate with the rest of our county members. And I think that is a wonderful thing to be able to collaborate. You know, house divided will not stand, so we have to make sure that we can all work together. Again, I wanna thank the city workers. This goes from the water facility people that come back and check your, I'm sorry, I don't know his name, Mr. Robert. Robert, he was awesome. I apologize, I was like the blonde, I had no idea how to even turn off the water in this house that I had just moved in. They put in a work order and things. He walked me through it and was very educated with what he did. He was a good person to do that and help me understand some things. And again, the guys that do the leaves and the brush, they were out there in the sleet and the snow picking up the leaves. I mean, I don't think enough gratitude is put towards these workers for the city of Hamlet. A lot of them were kind of on defense mode, but when you thank them, I mean, their little eyes just lighten up. And then thanks to the trash collectors, I do believe that they thought my aunt was still living there, she's very elderly. And I thought I had a trash fairy, because I call her, when does the trash go out? It's not in there. And they were literally walking in there to get her trash can and dump it. So I apologize to guys, I'll take my trash out now. But I did just want to just revisit some things, it's just how I do, I wanna make sure that we can take care of ourselves and just kinda grow from there. So thank you all for allowing me to step up and bring those things to you.
Thank you.
And if you'd like the new numbers, I did give, there's Mary Cox. She is the public health epidemiologist. And you can go on that website and pull up the new numbers, they're gonna post them next month, I do believe. And that will show you the numbers, where we stand as a county. And show you actually where each law officer has to have an, given Narcan, Narcan, Deloxone. There's so many different names out there now. But again, your new illicit drug is coming. It's already gonna be administered, it's a vicious cycle. Pharmacology, pharmacists are offering it, you can only get it in the doctor's offices. And it already is out there as an illicit drug called special K rave drug. So that's gonna be your next problem, okay? So just wanted to bring that to light. So thank you all.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else that's got anything they need to bring to us tonight? If not, we will close this. Comments from attendees. Our next order of business and new business is the oath of office for our newly appointed council member, Mr. Maurice Stewart. Maurice, if you will come forward and meet with our city clerk, and if you've got any family that would like to come up with you. And if you'd like to tell us who these folks are, with you.
So if I have my mother with me and my sister and cousin, quite a bit, my mentees Evan and Ahmad, if you'll come up as well. And my Charlotte Street family, if they'll come up as well. This is just folks that have been with me all my life here in Hamlet. So I definitely wouldn't do that, do this without them. And thank you guys.
We're certainly glad to have them with us tonight. And if our clerk would administer the oath. And everybody get lined up where Ms. Jasmine can get your picture.
Aye, Maurice Lee Stewart the second.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
And maintain.
And maintain.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of North Carolina.
And the Constitution of the State of North Carolina.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
As a council member.
As a council member.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And now I present to you, Councilmember Maurice Lee Stewart the second.
Jonathan. Tonight. After, after the meeting.
After the meeting.
Post on the side.
Mr. Stewart. We're certainly glad to have you with us tonight and looking forward to working with you. And when the little button is green, it's working. Okay, moving along. Let everybody get seated. Agenda go, we're on these two applications. Yep, that's where we are. I said show Maurice room. We're very pleased tonight to have Sheriff Clemmons with us. Lieutenant Andres Dietrich from Monroe and Rockingham, my good friend. And Ms. Angeline David, she is our, is the councilperson from Dobbin's Heights. And we're certainly glad to have her down tonight. Okay, moving along to item number seven, which is appointments to the Hamlet Depot Board. Council, you have before you two names that have been submitted by the depot board and have requested that council approve them for the depot board. One of them is Mr. Jarvis Joy. And the other one is Mr. Barry Cozy. And both of them live in the city of Hamlet, or excuse me, one lives in the city of Hamlet and one in the city of Hoffman. What are your wishes on these two?
Motion to appoint to the Hamlet Depot Board.
Okay, I got a motion.
A second.
I have a second. Any further comments?
How many, what does this put us up to now? Fifteen?
Fifteen?
And.
Yeah, that's right, we had thirteen last month.
Yeah, it's on the back.
Oh, it is, okay.
Very last page.
Last page of what? Oh, I know, who's in there, okay. I have a motion and a second. Are there any further comments? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Okay, next item of business, item number eight. Very pleased here, if the police chief would come forward, please, to the, Chief Waters. Please come up to the podium there if you would, sir. I have a resolution to read tonight and to ask for the approval of council and be adopted by the council. It says, it says, whereas Police Chief Michael Scott Waters began his career with the Hamlet Police Department in nineteen ninety-one as a patrol officer. And whereas he served in numerous ranks with the Hamlet Police Department and was promoted to Chief of Police November the twenty-fourth of twenty fourteen. And whereas Chief Waters has announced his retirement effective March the twenty-ninth of twenty nineteen. And whereas North Carolina General Statute twenty-one eighty-seven point two A permits the city to donate to Chief Waters his badge upon retirement. And whereas North Carolina General Statute twenty dash one eighty-seven point two A states the governing body of a law enforcement agency may, in its discretion, also award a retiring member upon request the service sidearm of the retiring member at a price determined by such governing body upon determining that the person receiving the weapon is not ineligible to own, possess or receive a firearm under the provisions of state or federal law. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Hamlet that the service weapon and badge issued to Hamlet Police Chief Michael Scott Waters are declared surplus. And upon his retirement on March twenty-ninth of twenty nineteen, his badge will be donated to him and his service sidearm, a Glock twenty-one forty-five automatic, serial number LLH eight seventy-eight, sold to him for the price of one dollar. Adopted by the city council tonight, I have, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion and I'm gonna pay that dollar.
I've already done it.
I'll pay the fifty cents and give it back to him.
You're gonna have some extra money, Chief.
It's actually already been paid for yesterday morning.
Paid in full.
Yeah, anyway, I need a motion.
I have a motion.
I have a second to motion.
I got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed likewise. This time, it's gonna be my pleasure to be able to present this.
Almost didn't get it back. I like that lightweight pistol, that was awesome. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate all your service.
Yeah, thank you so much, Chief. Look forward to seeing you frequently. I just wanted to say that it is a long, long, long tradition, longer than all of us that are around here, that anytime a police officer or state trooper, whoever retires, either a retired member or a current active member pays for the weapon. And I wanted to be sure that, got that dollar in there, so he's gonna have a little extra anyway, so that's good. Anyone else got comments?
Yeah, I just, Chief, I wanna say, you know, really do appreciate, I know you started before probably I was born or there around about, somewhere in there, I won't tell you age. But do appreciate everything you've done. It takes a lot to serve that many years, one place, dealing with the same. You know, I know you had the good, you had the bad. But to serve and be able to do that for as long as you did, it takes a lot. Just to put on that badge and gun every day and to go out and deal with some of the things you deal with. Andreas and I was talking about that before the meeting, just the things, it's every day, same stuff, sometimes the same people, over and over and over. It takes a good heart and a lot to deal with it and do it. And I appreciate everything you've done. Thank you.
Thank you so much, yes. Thank you. Thank you for what you've done over the years. I tell you, it's a, it's a great thing when anyone as a police officer, law enforcement, has an opportunity to retire. And when we do that and we're able to retire and we make it through all those years, we think about all those that didn't make it and their families, so. It's exciting when somebody does get their retirement and makes it through. Next item of business, item number nine, approval of tax releases. Council, you have that before you, what are your wishes?
Motion to approve.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the tax releases. Have a second?
A second.
Have a second? Any further comment on it? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. We also have before us a budget amendments. Yeah, I got that over here. Is there any comment on that, council, at this time? About anything that's on there?
No comments. We had some unexpected items in there that came up and I think staff took care of them pretty good. But we'll still be in some good standings, so that's all good news.
Do you have any questions, Mr. Stewart, on any of that? Okay. Okay, very good. I will say that we did have our budget meeting last week on Friday. And the city of Hamlet is in great shape financially. We're doing fine. We do know that we have issues coming, some serious issues involving water and sewer. And so we're working on those issues and trying to determine what will be, what will happen on that. But as far as financially, right now, the city's in great shape and we're extremely pleased with it. Alright, I've got a, do I have a motion on the?
Motion.
Okay, do they have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise, alright. This isn't, this isn't coming up until April, excuse me. But this will be the last meeting before Arbor Day. I have a proclamation from the mayor tonight. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean air, produce life-giving oxygen and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires and other countless wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic viability of business areas and beautify the community. And whereas trees wherever planted are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I Bill Bayless, Mayor of the city of Hamlet, do hereby proclaim Friday, April the fifth, as Arbor Day in the city of Hamlet. And I urge all citizens to celebrate their Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And furthermore, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. This twelfth day of March, twenty nineteen. And while I'm on that particular issue, I want to say that we graciously appreciate what the tree board does here in Hamlet. They're all volunteers, they work hard, and if you'll notice, they've always got a tree in the city every month, it's the tree of the month. But we do appreciate those folks that work on that and try to beautify the city and make sure that we have a beautiful city. Okay, moving along to other business, we'll entertain the city manager's report at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, what a crowd and what a night. It certainly is good to see everyone here tonight. It's wonderful to see this place filled today and we certainly appreciate all of you being here. I certainly appreciate Mrs. Stewart's mother being here with us tonight and sharing your son with the city. We are very much looking forward to that and to his friends and family. We appreciate you. Sharing Mr. Stewart with us here at the city of Hamlet, we are very much looking forward to his appointment. And we really appreciate all of you being here tonight. Also, it's great to see, as the mayor was saying, elected officials from Ellerby and Dobbin's Heights here tonight. And of course, the sheriff. It's wonderful to have all of you here. You're always welcome to come by and always good to see you and have you here tonight. Also, Ms. Bernie Solans is with us tonight. She came by and spoke with me yesterday and told me about some great things that are happening on Hamlet Avenue. We're leasing some places out down there, we're cleaning up and things are really doing well down there. So certainly appreciate all that she does down there and of course, all the local merchants that are on Hamlet Avenue as well. There are a few formal announcements I wanna make tonight, council. Number one being the property that we surplus last month will be coming up for auction online on GovWorldAuctions.com beginning on Wednesday, March twentieth and going through Wednesday, April third. So if anyone's interested in that, they're more than welcome to check out the website. And everything that's going to be listed on there will be available for inspection at the Public Works Department, which is at one thousand O curse Drive. So we welcome any and all bids and welcome any interested buyer to go down and check out those items. Also, since we've last met, we've had two very important personnel changes with the city of Hamlet. Ms. Jennifer Seaman was appointed as the city's new downtown coordinator and also the director of the depot. She is a Hamlet native and has been on the job several weeks now and certainly excited to have her on board, as well as Ms. Sarah Locklear. She started two weeks ago as the new senior center director. And we're very fortunate and blessed to have two very qualified candidates, or qualified employees, leading those departments, rather. So wanted to bring that to council and the public's attention tonight. And that is all I have formally tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Council, any questions that you have for the city manager at this time?
The auction will be March twentieth through April third. And that's GovWorldAuctions.com.
This time, we'll move along to comments at council. First, I'd like to say, Jeremy, I apologize, I didn't see you come in, but we're certainly glad to have you, so you're always welcome. Start with.
Well, it's been said before and I'll say it again, congratulations to Mr. Maurice Stewart. We're glad to have you on board and welcome to the city council. I know you will serve well. Thank you.
Is that all you got, Mr. Moore?
That's all.
Thank you. Mr. McQueen?
Maurice, you're probably gonna hear this from everybody. Welcome back to Hamlet and it's so good to have you on the board. Appreciate your willingness to step up and serve, look forward to working with you. I have just a couple things. We had our budget meeting last week. Like the mayor said, everything looks good. Promise and future, have a bond that's about to be paid off in a year or so. Uh, have a bond that's about to be paid off in a year or so. And we'll be able to utilize some, some of those funds to upgrade the water and sewer. Um, so we're looking good on that respect. Um, uh, like to thank Mr. Blanton for an outstanding past couple of weeks. Um, from listening to his comments, you can tell he's full of enthusiasm. He, he's got a lot of energy. And, uh, and we just love the job that he's doing. Um, every position that we had to fill over the past couple of positions, uh, even with the city council member, just qualified people. I mean, that struck me as one of the things that, um, I mean, it, it, it was good to know. We've got a lot of qualified people that want to come and be a part of this town and this community. And, and that's just, that's awesome. Um, also, uh, like to thank Scott for his years of service with the city. Um, way back when, on a day in December in nineteen ninety-one, Scott and myself started at the Hamlet Police Department on the same exact day. Um, so he's been there for a long time and served the city well. And, uh, just like to reiter- reiterate what everybody said, um, about his service. Um, thank for the sheriff for coming. Um, to support Scott and, and Maurice. Um, appreciate all you and your agency does to assist us when we need it. And I know we're there whenever y'all need us as well, and, and, and the relationship is, is, is stronger than it ever has been. And I, and I'm pleased with that. Uh, Trooper Dietrich, uh, good to see you, uh, in attendance. Um, it's, it's just awesome that we've got so many people here tonight. Uh, hate that it had to come because we have a new member. I wish people would really come out and, and see what goes on and participate in the government. Y'all here are what makes us do our job and hold us accountable. And it's, it's good to see, uh, a lot of folks here tonight. Jeremy and, uh, Ms. Councilman from Dobbin Heights, thank you all for coming. Just wanna keep moving forward in a positive and productive manner. And that's it.
Okay, Ms. Maskey? Well, okay. Mr. Stewart, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. So, first of all, thank God. Can't, can't, can't begin to give comments without, you know, saying that first, so. Giving honor to God, uh, for all, all of this. Mayor Bayless, thank you for having me. And all the council members, thank you so much. Thank you so much for the support. Uh, the guidance so far, the lunches. Uh, all that great stuff.
Best part.
Uh, best part. Um, and, and definitely hope it doesn't stop. Uh, I'll be looking for, you know, looking for support from you guys and education and wisdom and all that great stuff. Um, to, my family came up, but my amazing niece, um, walked in. Um, Alexis, who is a recent college graduate, and I'm so proud of her. And she missed it when we walked up. But also, more importantly, my super amazing, smart, beautiful little great niece, Amari Farmer is here, and she, she missed it earlier. But I'm so happy to see her. And thank you so much. She is a reason why I'm doing this. So she can see a future and see, you know, the town where she's coming from. And, and kinda understand that, you know, we come from four generations of family from Hamlet. And so, you know, just this appointment is not it. I plan to, you know, be a part of elections and, and getting, you know, staying into Hamlet and staying into this position and just being a part of, of this. I am so thankful. My parents gave me the opportunity to do something like this. Uh, my father transitioned last year. And he's not able to, to, to physically be here, but I know he's here. Um, I definitely know he's here. My ninety-four-year-old grandmother is, is, is in the bed, and I went and talked with her today and sat and held her hand. And she gave me some words of wisdom. So, uh, I'm just thankful for that. My mother, thankful to still have my beautiful, uh, mother with me here in Hamlet. But, you know, I won't go on, but I just, I just had to thank a few people, just, you know, I, I, I'm a native of Hamlet. I, I went, I was gone for twenty-five, thirty years, and now I'm back. So remember the name, Maurice Stewart. He's back. He's back. Wanna thank the sheriff for being here, the elective officials from Ellerby and Dobbin's Heights, my, my college friends from North Carolina, A and T State University is here, and just can't thank everybody enough. I'm gonna be looking for guidance from everybody in this room. And, and, and I want, the last thing that I'll say is, well, two things I'll say is, we wanna see this room looking like this every second Tuesday of the month. Not just tonight. So we, I, I encourage everyone to please come. And the last thing that I'll say is, you know, part of, the, the, the reason I'm here is for everybody in the city of Hamlet. The things that I wanna do is for the city of Hamlet, um, and for the people of Hamlet. So thank you all so much for having me. And, and I'm hoping that you definitely will, will have a prosperous time on the board. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Thank you.
And one thing I'll say, I'm so glad my council member told me the button on and off.
There you go.
Thank you.
That, yeah, that'll slip up on you. It does me. Um, Mr. Bowie?
Um, all I have is, is I, I am glad to see a full house tonight. I think it's awesome. I love to see youth, younger people come. I am gonna get that hair bow though, 'cause I think that will look better in my head. You don't think so? Think it'd hold up nice? Alright, um, first of all, Sheriff Andreas, appreciate you guys coming. Uh, you, you guys are big leaders in this town. Put in a hard, lot of hard work, uh, and we do appreciate you, everything you do. And all that you deal with, day in and day out, the goods, the bads, the uglies, anything you have. Ms. David, obviously I see you a lot, but it's good to have you here again, to see you again tonight. Uh, so glad to have you. Um, Jeremy, thank you for coming out. Glad to have you here tonight. And I know I'm gonna kinda echo what some people said. Uh, Bernice, do appreciate what you do on Hamlet Avenue. And it looks good. It's gonna continue to look good, and we're gonna make it look better and better every chance we get. So, well, that, that's right, that's right. Yeah, I see you over there. You got your, got ideas already in your head. Um, but appreciate you guys. Uh, had the opportunity to, uh, meet Jeremy, or, uh, Jennifer and Sarah. I, I think they'll be really good for the museum and the senior center. Lot of enthusiasm. They're, they're ready, they're capable. Uh, and ready to do what we need to have done down there to make everything look good. Um, budget meeting went really good. I think we have some good, some good plans, uh, ahead for the next budget cycle. Uh, I would encourage, you know, citizens to come forth with your ideas. If you think of something, you see something. You know, we discussed signs, uh, just some entrances and stuff coming into the city of Hamlet. Have some really good ideas. We've thrown these things out there for a while now, and I, I think now we're gonna finally act on some of them. So, you know, if you have any ideas, I don't want it to just be the board up here. I appreciate people from the community coming up with something and saying, hey, I think this would look good. Uh, nothing's ever too big. You know, we can scale it down, but it's never too big to come up with and say, I'd love a water park, but, uh, maybe one day. Um, Maurice, I'm excited. Uh, I told you that when I first met you, talked to you, everything you had to bring to the table. I think it's really good, and I'm, I'm just excited to work with you. And, uh, anything you need, don't ever hesitate. Give me a call. Uh, I'm up pretty much, I sleep about five hours every day, so just, just give me a call. Alright, thanks, sir. Mayor, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Same thing everybody else said. Maurice, we're glad to have you with us. And, uh, look forward to your ideas and your thoughts. And being able to work with you and, uh, get a lot of things done. I said before, we have been working on the budget. I would encourage anyone who has any interest at all, wants to know where their money is going, their tax dollars, to come in and look at a copy of the, uh, budget, which we normally have a copy available there at the desk, don't we? And certainly look where the money is going. It's, uh, you'd be surprised. And, uh, we have to work awfully hard, uh, uh, our finance officer and our manager, a lot of times moving this money around so that it gets spent where it needs to be spent. So it's kind of a hair pulling issue. Uh, Mr. Manager, again, I want to reiterate how much we appreciate what you have done and what you're doing. You've been in a, quite, since first of the year, you had to hire two, two supervisors, and now you're gonna be having to hire a police chief, so, uh, we appreciate the work that you're doing on that and look forward to what happens on that. Uh, other than that, it's getting to be springtime now, and people cleaning up the yards. We'll try to get everything picked up as fast as we can. Uh, if you have issues, if you have potholes that we don't know whether they're, please call City Hall and let us know about the potholes, uh, so we can get them repaired.
One, one thing to that, Mayor, with, uh, talking about debris. Please, please, please make sure debris is put on your side of the curb.
Don't block the drain.
Because it will seriously back the drains up and you'll have flooding in your areas if you do that, so.
And, yeah, and your neighbor will be calling, complaining.
Yeah, just, I know it, I know you don't want it in your yard, but we try to pick it up quickly, just, you know, I've seen it a lot here lately. And it will back the drains up and we'll have serious problems, so.
Thanks, sir. If there's no further comments at this time, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Have a motion?
Second.
Have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Thank you.